Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the August 14, 2017, Meeting of the Board of Selectmen. We have one name on our list for public participation, Radha Falstein. Come up and take a seat at the table. Either mic. Please state your name and address and everything.
Radha Falstein, 9 Rochelle Drive. I know you have a full agenda, so I wrote a really quick note, so I'm going to read it if you don't mind. First of all, I would like to thank the entire board and Steve Mayo for your past and future support of our Wakefield business community. I just wanted to remind you as we are going into our most busy season for most of our Wakefield businesses, that time and timing is everything as you consider voting on current or future decisions that will directly have an impact on our businesses. Please consider to contact any one of us for any additional information that can help you speed up the process in your decision making. Most of the time, we have the answers to help you to help us. We are open and available. Thank you again for all of your support.
Thank you.
Thank you, Radha.
Thanks, Brad.
At the time, motion to go right into the next item of the approval of the minutes, motion to approve the minutes of July 10, 2017. So move in second, if at all, in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Personnel and appointments. Appointment of Laura Lee McKay, 101 Broadway, to the Housing Authority, term to expire in June 20, 2022. Motion to approve?
Second.
Move in second, if at all, in favor?
I have just had a question, Paul.
Yes.
I know we've spoken about this previously in terms of board appointment, and I just don't know anything about this person that's nominated for a term that goes into 2022. And I think this is of general practice and might be better for us to at least have some information about the person, the nominee, across the board, whether it be the Housing Authority or a committee. I just think it makes for a better practice so that we can make informed appointments as compared with blind appointments. That's kind of how I feel on this.
Yeah, we'll make sure you get that in. Longtime Wakefield resident, and they needed someone who was a resident within the Housing Authority. So that was really the reason why she came in here. But I think you're right. You're right. We'll make sure you get it.
From a process perspective going forward, not just for me, but I mean for this board and future boards, I think it's a better practice.
We kicked around the application process for a little bit.
Excellent. Okay, very good. Let's move right into the Community Spirit Award. Right now, this one goes back maybe seven months after talking to several citizens of something to possibly do. We had the Officer of the Quarter that we were doing. There are multiple awards that recognize different individuals throughout the community, but the Board of Selectmen really didn't have anything. So I petitioned the board to whether or not they would be interested in having what we are now going to be calling the Spirit of the Community Award.
That was Radha's three minutes.
We often get calls at town hall, that most of you, people in the community who quietly make Wakefield a better place to live, work, or visit. These citizens aren't looking for any fame or any farefare, but truly deserve recognition. As chairman, I suggested that we periodically recognize these individuals under the following criteria. Any one select person could request the award for a citizen, must be a citizen of Wakefield, cannot be a town employee, cannot be an elected official. The Board of Selectmen agreed to this, and they gave their recommendations. And upon those recommendations, we have our first two recipients of the Spirit of Community Award. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Yance Santos to make the first award presentation to Deborah Jones.
Sure. Debbie, if you could put it there, so people can see you. I am privileged to present the first Spirit of Community Award to Deborah Jones, Debbie Jones, who's worked at the Food Pantry since 2009. I think it's 2009. And she's in the position of kind of a de facto manager, hiring volunteers, putting in a new system, which she was just chatting with me about. And I think everyone knows what great work the Food Pantry does. Last year, they served 580 families. In the past, I know, we've served over 600. And I think some people in Wakefield are shocked when they hear that number, the amount of people that we help through the Food Pantry, through everyone's donations, and certainly through the dedicated work of the volunteers. So I would like to award this to Debbie Jones with great appreciation from the town.
Mr. Dabrowski, who has the second award that we want to announce tonight. The recipient of the award is Brian Fox. Brian, would you care to take the front and center shot?
I was expecting a different type of look out tonight.
Sorry, are you disappointed?
No, that's all right.
It's a great honor for me to have nominated and now be able to present this award to Brian Fox. I think Brian is a household name in these parts. Certainly, if you've been online, he's very active in posting on various groups, on Facebook. If you've been out in public, you've seen him undoubtedly. On occasion, you've seen him dressed in very interesting apparel. So to Paul's point, I'm a bit disappointed, Brian, that you are so conservatively dressed tonight. But nonetheless, we're not going to take the award back from you. You are the embodiment, though, of what it is to be an engaged, active resident. Your enthusiasm, your encouragement, your pride in this town makes it a better place. And I know I speak on behalf of the board and the community at large when I say thank you. Your involvement with the Wakefield Independence Day Committee is second to none. Your commitment over the course of a year is unwavering, and we couldn't ask for more in a volunteer. And so I'm so incredibly proud of you for receiving this. I'm so incredibly proud for our town for recognizing the talented people that make up our community. And I know you're a big Bruins fan, so while you may not be receiving the Stanley Cup, please think of this as Wakefield Stanley Cup to you.
Thank you.
At this moment, Mark, would you care to do a photo of the two selectmen and the two recipients, please?
Thank you very much. At this time, we have a 7:10 public hearing scheduled for the Packers Store License for Pachi Corporation. I'd like to invite those individuals to come in and...
Roll call.
Right?
Yep.
I need a roll call or vote, please, to go into a public hearing.
Aye.
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 Thank you. We are now in public hearing. Good evening. My name is Gregory Demarcus. I'm an attorney with Offices in Lynn. To my immediate right is Kalash Patel. She's formed a corporation known as Pachi Corporation, which is an individual purchase and sale agreement to purchase McDonald's liquors on 15 Water Street. She is the sole stockholder. She's 100% owner of the corporation. She's the president, treasurer. She's a secretary and a sole director. She's an American citizen. To her right is Narendra Kumar Patel, who will be the manager of the store, and he'll be there full-time, $40 a week. Now, as I said, we vented into a purchase and sale agreement with the owner to purchase the business plus the inventory, and it's going to be financed through a loan with Rockland Trust Company. And so Rockland Trust Company, as a condition of the loan, has asked that we apply for a pledge of the liquor license. And the balance of the money will be, will come through, come from the account of Mrs. Patel, and we provided the, in the application, the bank statements for Mrs. Patel. We've also entered into a lease for 15 years with the owner of the real estate. So let me say a few words about Mrs. Patel. She's owned a store known as Glendale Liquors in Everett for 17 years and has never had a problem there. It's a well-run store, never been a violation of any kind whatsoever. She's a very experienced operator. While she will not be the manager, she will spend time at the business assisting the manager. So she will be on the premises, quite often assisting the manager. Mr. Patel, for about five or six years, worked at the Shell Gas Station at Tewksbury, on 1220 Main Street in Tewksbury, and he's a very seasoned operator of stores of this type. He, and as I said, he'll be there basically on a full-time basis. I've represented many Patels over the years. I represent Mrs. Patel before, and I just, I am confident that we won't be appearing before the board for any unpleasant circumstances. They're very good operators. They know how to run a business, and I think that they'll be a source of pride to the community, and they'll be an asset to the community. So we're asking for three things tonight. We're asking for the approval of the transfer of the liquor license. We're asking for the appointment of Narendra Kumar as the manager, and we're asking for the pledge of the liquor license to Rockland Trust Company. I'm going to open it up to members of the boards for any questions.
I have a question.
Okay. And?
I think one of the issues that you may be aware of is that we're trying to revitalize the downtown, and there's a lot of focus on helping to foster business within the downtown. But there's also an expectation that businesses will do their part to be a strong partner in making that happen. Can you help us understand, what if any experience you have in working with the community of Everett in that regard, or what experience, or what expectations you have coming into Wakefield in terms of making sure that your property looks presentable and is an asset to our business community as compared with a detractor?
You understand the question? He's asking what's your relationship with the community in the city of Everett and how you can become an asset to the community of Wakefield? Yes.
Wakefield is very quiet and nice people.
Yeah, but you can't whisper to me. You have to speak into the microphone and let everybody hear.
Yeah, like in Everett, is everything mixed people over there, like too many Mexican people and everything. Lot of work, and Wakefield is like a nice city and nice people.
And how are you going to be an asset to the city, to the town of Wakefield, and what are you going to do to help the community? Are you going to, you know, take part in community events and things like that and help sponsor community events? I think that's what they're asking, what you will do to be an asset to the city, community.
No, I don't think we're asking.
I guess what I'm asking are, you know, you see the building right now, and you see the business.
Yeah.
What are your plans in terms of improving, say, the outside of the business or improving the windows so that it looks more presentable, looks like a more attractive storefront? What are you planning to do or what can you do? That's our hope. It's a private business, I understand that. But our hope is that our private business owners will do all that they can to improve the facades or the exteriors or make the businesses nicer. So have you thought about that at all? What are you, what are you doing, or what are you planning, or what do you hope to do?
After closing, we decide everything, like change inside, like racks, and yeah, try to like mold business and nice service.
I guess what I can say is I think I speak for the community when I, when I just ask that any new business coming in, be very mindful that we're trying to improve the community to make it look nicer, to make the downtown a more appealing place. And so in making decisions, we ask that you keep that in mind, so that we can have that as an example of what a business should look like, you know, really spruced up and proved.
Do you understand? They want you to keep, they want you to keep the business, they want you to keep the inside of the business, the business looking good.
Yeah.
Upgrade it if you can, spend some money there to make it look good.
It's not the most attractive shop inside.
So I also want to say, as the board, we want to be a partnership and help you. So if you have questions, we have a chamber here, we have experts that sit here, so come to us. We would love to help you to make the business seem more Wakefield.
For more business, yeah.
Yeah, that's our goal. So whatever we can partner with you to come to us to help you be successful, please do.
Yeah.
It's appearance more than what we're seeking right now, the appearance of the business from the outside, if it makes, if it's better than what it is. Whatever improvements to the, to our community, we do to the business, but that's more just business. But as Marines have come to us and sit down with us, and we're really open to discuss anything that we have said and tried. So this is a good time to just form that partnership with us.
But I would really ask that it's a priority for you when you're purchasing a business to look at how you can improve the look of the outside, the look of the inside, to make that more attractive. I would really just ask you, we can't demand it, but I can ask of it, ask it of you, and we're here to help you any way that we can to do that. And other business owners, too, are willing to help and pitch in, but it's really important that we can make that look nicer than it is today.
Yeah.
That's a really, that's a priority for the people of this town, and I just ask that you take that very seriously and be very mindful of that going forward.
Is the manager in question right now tip-certified? No, he's going to get tip-certified. Has he been fingerprinted? He has been fingerprinted, yes. Okay, so we have to make sure that he's tip-certified before we move forward. He's aware of that. He's going to enroll. I think those address the, some of the requirements. So we can make the motion as a group?
Pardon?
Oh, yes, this is a public. Are there any questions from members of the public regarding this issue? Seeing none. Okay, can I have a motion then to approve the transfer of the liquor license? A approval of Mr. Patel as manager and a pledge from us of the liquor license to Rockland?
Yes, Rockland Trust. Well, one motion, but we'll record them separately in a minute, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
So move to have a second?
Second?
The only thing is the tip-certified, it's contingent upon tip-certification.
Yes, yes.
Just one question. I didn't catch that in the beginning, but were you actually buying the business or the building as well?
No, just the business. They've entered into a lease with the Water Street Revival Trust for 15 years for the real estate.
So it limits you a little bit to exactly changing the lot to begin with, but the facade is definitely important to all of us, but I didn't know if you're buying the building or just the business.
Right, but they can still improve the appearance of the business itself, right?
Absolutely. Okay. Thank you.
Any further comments? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Hearing none? Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck.
I have some green cards. Take a roll call vote to close the public hearing.
Aye.
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 Yes, aye.
Thank you very much. This public hearing is now closed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good luck.
And I can do the next public hearing. Yes, let's continue with the public hearings. We have a 7:20 public hearing scheduled for the Bread Shop, 411 Main Street, Outdoor Dining. Motion to enter into a public hearing. Roll call.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are now in a public hearing for the Bread Shop. Welcome, Mark. Welcome. For the record, if you state your names, please.
Sure, my name is Margaret Schenek.
And Lauren Donati.
Thank you very much. We're here to formalize the...
Yeah, as the board recalls, there is an application process for outdoor dining. We certainly encourage that. In the case of the Bread Shop and our summer schedule, and we didn't want them to lose the whole summer, we kind of did a pilot program, and they had a few tables out there. I saw people sitting there, and we received no issues at all from the town. So my recommendation would be that everything's in the package and that we, the board so moves just to approve it. Looks like a good success, and I guess the Phantom Gourmet was there?
Yeah.
And congratulations on one year.
Thank you.
Thank you. So before we go into discussion, I'm going to make the motion, move that we enter a motion to approve, and then for discussion, and then we have to go into discussion. So I have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Moving in second, and now we're in discussion. Any discussion from members of the board?
Public.
Hold on. I'll make sure that's everybody from the board first.
I just think your business is, what is a model business for the town, and it's sort of, it's in this modern curve, and any way that, again, this partnership we just spoke about with this other, new business that are coming in, that's, anything the town can do, we should do. And so I think this is a great step in that direction.
Thank you.
Any other members of the board? Are there any comments from the public that wish to speak at this time?
We love it.
Thank you. With no further comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Hearing's done. Congratulations on your outdoor dining.
Thank you.
Would you like to go, roll call to close the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All in favor, thank you. So let's move, continue with the public hearings for the time being. Let's do, scheduled the public hearing for the transfer of the liquor license to Mara LLC, DBA four points by Sheridan Wakefield for September 11, 2017 at 7:10 p.m. Motion?
Yep. Need a motion for that.
Motion for that, please? They have a motion?
I said moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Need to schedule a public hearing to place underground conduit from Verizon on Emerson Street and Chestnut Street for September 25, 2017 at 7:10 p.m. Motion?
I move.
Move in second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Let's continue now with the, with the smaller presentations, please. I would like us to consider hearing on item number J right now, Wakefield Main Street Program Signs. Do we have to do with the first point?
No.
Just find it. Signs.
Signs, yep.
And for the record, I'll need the names of those sitting at the big table.
I do love rap.
Tom, would you like to advise, please? Tom, please advise.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You guys are like Shark Tank.
Yeah, Shark Tank. I just gave Mike to Peter. He's got two of them.
There's your sign.
Okay, let's, I'm not sure.
Want to turn it around? That would be, because we all have carpet.
That's fine, whatever you'd like to do, if you want to do that, sir. There you go. Who's going to be leading off the discussion?
I will lead it up.
Put your name in.
Bob Malhite, 157 Montrose Ave, President of Wakefield Main Streets. Welcome. Thank you. So we're here tonight to present a pilot program for putting A-frames in for some of the businesses. We'll go through, you guys all have a pamphlet in front of you, so we'll just go through real quickly, and then we'll answer questions as quick as we can. So the United Team that stands before you are here asking you to vote for a pilot program for Experience Wakefield, A-Frame Project. We understand that A-Frame signs are currently not permitted based on the town bylaws. We would, we would like to create a controlled, limited pilot program that would allow for 50 beautifully designed chalkboard A-frames, which you see in front of you, similar to the ones you see in front of you, to replace in a lottery-based brick-and-mortar businesses in Wakefield. We would open that up not only to the downtown Main Street area, but also to Greenwood and Albion Street, based on some conversations that we have with Chairman Donaco and Mr. Mayo. I'm not going to go through every date that we'd like to run it, but we would like to run the program basically the first Saturday after Labor Day up until the Saturday of the, excuse me, holiday stroll. Just on Saturdays, limited hours.
Yeah, from 10 to 4.
From 10 to 4 on Saturdays. The reason for just that is that it allows the businesses to kind of create special events, not necessarily sales, but maybe different events that they're having at the stores to drive people to the business. Everything we do as Main Street and working closely with the merchants group is all about driving business to downtown. We don't, it's very important for all of us to work together, Selectmen, Main Streets, and the merchants group, to make sure that, we put everything else aside and to make sure that we drive people into our stores, not just Wakefield residents, although ideally that would be great as well, but we're looking for people from the lake, and we're looking for different ways to do that. We feel from doing some, you know, studying on the internet and talking to different groups like the MAPC, which we've done business with, different grants, we feel that having A-frames is just a small piece of that, but it's definitely a start. So we're asking for the selectmen to, obviously, we're open to questions, but in the end, we're asking for the selectmen to give us approval to run a pilot program.
I have a question.
Sure.
So I see these in Boston all the time, and I love the funny saint, you know, it catches your eye.
It does, yeah.
I absolutely read when I walk by. But the 10 to 4, so what, restaurants in Wakefield seem to be cut out of that time period if they want to put specials or something. I didn't, I just didn't know if you were targeting just businesses or restaurants as well.
I think that it's open. I'm Laura, by the way, from Kid Cazo Art Studio on Albion Street, and I also live at 21 Morrison Ave in Wakefield. If we could extend the time, fantastic, and if you'd approve that to go into the later parts of Saturday, I think that would deem the project to be more successful.
It certainly makes sense for me from, certainly a restaurant.
Definitely.
And for businesses that are open paths forward.
I think it's important that we have conformity with a lot of our conventions. We're looking at light posts, we conform with these sandwich boards as well. So to Dan's point, I would like to see restaurants and other shops be eligible, because I would hate to see a shop with one A-frame and, you know, another place two doors down with something completely different. I took a walk around the lake on Saturday with my wife. The hotel at the end of the lake has something that looks like, you know, was done by Fisher Price. But so it's really important that we have conformity with these sandwich boards.
I think, you know, from talking to Mr. Mayo and Mr. Donaco about this, too, that's important to us, too. You know, we're, we really want everybody who's going to do them to use the same signs, because it creates, it creates a culture, it creates a look downtown and wherever else Greenwood, wherever else it's going to be, so.
And I'm glad you're, you know, as a resident of Greenwood, I'm glad you're including them as a mix.
You love Greenwood, too.
So can I have some questions?
Sure.
Two questions. One, what's the process of businesses or maybe other folks who maybe want to sign? Because I'm thinking there's actually parts of the lake that there's no businesses, but how great to have a sign up the lake that gets people down that way? And then two, so it's a pilot program, which is so great, but how are you going to, what's the process for measuring success? Because I want to know at Christmas that businesses increased or we had more people, so do you, have you guys thought about that?
I think we're just starting to think about that. I think personally, I look at it very grassroots in connecting back with our customer base and our clients and asking them straight out, how do they feel about it, and using social media as a main portal to connect with people in the community. I think talking to people face-to-face is what helps you really get the answers that you need.
Yeah. So no, I love that, and I just would encourage you, again, it's early and it's starting, what do you say? Labor Day, right?
The Saturday afternoon.
So we have some time, so maybe even, you know, how many people average... Or how many people average go into a Rada store or go somewhere on a Saturday right now? And does it increase? That would... Just to have some measurables. So after Christmas and the New Year, you guys can come back and tell us that they were successful, and it's not a pilot program, it's something we'll do all the time. So any measure that you guys can give would be so helpful to us.
We'll definitely reach out to the vendors. Again, the merchants and I and Main Streets have a great relationship, so we'll work closely with them to try to get some numbers.
And I also like Ann work and live in Boston and think they're hilarious, so that's great.
It would be a hook to pull.
That's right. And they are. Awesome.
Thank you. Just a couple of questions. So currently, they're banned in Wakefield. Did you say there's going to be like a limited, like a lottery of something that decides on 50? Would that vary every week, or would that just a season?
It would be for the season, correct. And they would... Whoever the 50 merchants are to receive the signs, they would have a packet of policies and procedures put together by all of us as far as distance of where it should be on a sidewalk, the times it needs to be out. And if they don't play by the rules, the sign...
Lose their sign.
Goes away.
Did you... It sounds like you've done a lot of investigation and talking to a lot of the merchants. Has everyone been receptive? Like, if you talked to 100, would 100 have been receptive to that?
Yes.
Was there any thought about letting everyone do it that wanted to do it? Or just...
I think for costs where we're sampling out as a pilot program to streamline costs, I think it makes more sense to focus on 50 and then to get the results that we're looking for, the numbers, and then go from there.
Okay. Is your idea to possibly do it seven days a week eventually, or...
The idea kind of stemmed from a shop local, shop Saturdays, and really focusing on a Saturday atmosphere. I guess where it evolves could be open-ended.
Right.
But I think the idea right now is to focus on Saturdays, shopping smalls, shopping local.
Okay. And then from Labor Day to... I didn't catch the... What was the...
To the Saturday before the holiday stroll.
Oh, okay.
And obviously, we would be able to have them out at the holiday stroll since it's an event and the streets are already closed.
Right.
So it's like a freebie.
Okay. Right in front of the main businesses, like, okay.
We have to establish that.
Okay.
I guess we have one question or something that's come up in our conversations. The businesses that are currently in the shopping districts who are using A-Frame signs that are illegal, who and when is taking action to avoid those?
That would be up to this board, at some time to discuss that. At this point... At this current time, though, we just want to, I think, address your wishes right now as far as the pilot program is concerned. As it was touched upon, policy and procedures need to be worked out by this board as to how the A-frames are going to be put on the streets. We will discuss that at another time, but that doesn't need to happen by us. The idea is great as far as the A-frames are concerned. Ed, do you have... Would you like to have anything to say before I speak?
I just want to double check. So if this were to go into effect right after Labor Day, I mean, our next meeting is until September 11th.
That was my same comment.
And so do you guys have policies and procedures in place currently? Like a draft of that, or...
I think there's a pretty good draft.
Yeah, we could probably tidy it up and get something over to you relatively quickly, but if you're asking if I have something tonight, the answer is no.
Unless we have the sign committee.
So why don't we do this? So I'm going to make a recommendation that Ed, myself, and Steve work together on the procedures to get them ready for your first opening. If that's okay with the board.
Well, I also... It's important to have those done, because you don't want to go into a lottery system and have all of a sudden six.
I agree. It was on my comments as well.
Straight boards.
I agree. I agree.
That makes sense.
I'd like to see those as well.
Absolutely. So, Maureen, would you like to be on? Join us?
Sure.
Okay. So Maureen, we'll go with this. Ed, anything else at this moment?
So just to clarify, we're talking at 50, five zero, not 15. Correct. 50. And for the folks at home, this source of the funds is the Main Streets program?
No, the source of the funds is actually from the Coop Bank and from the Savings Bank. So they've both been kind enough to open their hearts and their wallets for this program, so.
So no tax dollars being spent on this.
Correct.
Figures clarify that.
Correct.
People understand.
Quick question. What is the cost for one A-frame?
On the last page of your little thing.
It's in the bag. It's in the bag?
Yeah.
It's in the bag.
So you can see the breakdown of the 50 frames. other businesses that don't get chosen in the lottery will be given posters explaining the project as well as postcards that they can pass out to their clients and their customers. So that will be included in that as well.
Is this ongoing on a weekly basis, or is it for this...
No, for the full 13 Saturdays.
I think just one other just item with that is I understand that they're being donated, and that's great. I also understand this is a pilot program. I think it's important that everyone goes into this, understanding that because it is a pilot program, the board may reassess. And if next year we determine that it's not the direction we want to go in, especially as we work on a master plan, which we'll hear a little bit more about as we start the process tonight with Mr. Faverman, I think it's important for everyone to have... Set everyone's expectations.
Right.
So next year, if we find it's not really what we want for the town, I don't want to hear, oh, this is $5,000 worth of signs, you know, that's going to go to waste, because that might be the case potentially.
Right.
So I think everyone needs to have their expectations set with this. I hope it's a great program. I hope it takes off. I also hope too that, you know, I think the logos are great, understanding that if we end up going forward with a more comprehensive kind of look and feel in terms of branding, that may change.
Of course.
So I don't want anyone to feel too wedded to what's happening. I think this is a good test run for us, understanding it is a test run for business.
Definitely. Everybody fully understands that. And what's neat about the idea of the signs is there's ideas of the top strip being magnetic, so you can actually flip out different logos or different branding depending on what event is happening in the town. So the signs can be repurposed and...
And they're black, and they match the lamp posts, too. I like that.
Just not the benches.
Really? It's chalk. Everybody knows it's chalk that's on them.
Town Council has a question.
Mr. Chairman, just one point. Sounds like a great idea, of course, but I just want to make sure. These things are going to be placed on sidewalks, right, which are part of the public way?
Correct.
That's... There's a legal distinction between putting them on a lot, in which case they'd be forbidden by zoning, and this board has no authority to vary zoning, versus putting them on the public way, including the sidewalk. And here, the board does have discretion. So the board can grant, you know, an exemption for these 50, provided that it's on the sidewalk. And in the past, the board has sometimes authorized the placement of things like newspaper boxes on the public way. And the things... The interests that the board has considered have been things like, is the box, or in this case, the sign, likely to fall over and hurt somebody or blow off into the street? Is it like... Is it going to obstruct traffic? So I think those are the things you probably want to focus on in your policies and procedures.
Right. And we've experimented with a few different types of A-frames to make sure that they're... You know, it's a balancing act. You have to make sure that they're heavy enough that, you know, they don't get knocked over easily, but light enough so that the merchants can pick them up and bring them in at the end of the night and bring them out without much struggle. So we are... We're cognizant of that as well.
Okay. So I have a few... Just I just want to clarify a couple of things. We have... So there's 50 total that we're going to do the pilot program?
Correct.
It's open to every brick-and-mortar in the town? Is that how that was established? There has to be a brick-and-mortar in order to receive the A-frame?
Right.
Okay, so that's fine?
And the town, like the Lowell Street, or no?
Well, they have to have... Obviously, like you said, that'd be a brick-and-mortar, and they have to have... They have to have room enough to have it out front. Whether it's an issue...
But Main Street and Albion.
No, it's open to the entire town.
Greenwood.
That's not what these folks said.
Yes, the entire town. Four corners, the whole... Yeah, we did.
The major shopping districts, I guess, right? The entire town.
Entire town.
Entire town. Okay. So just want to make sure that's clarified.
Entire town.
It's the entire town. We're not setting up districts. This is the entire town that this is open for. As Tom mentioned, it's currently banned, so being on the sidewalk, it has to be approved on sidewalks that can meet the ADA compliance and all that.
Correct.
Okay, so the sidewalk has to be wide enough to accommodate it. We know that it's a pilot... Shop Saturdays, it's just for the months that were... The weekends that were mentioned. The board will work on the policies and the procedures to make sure that everything's addressed. Has to be approved... Everything has to be approved by this board. There will be a sundown clause, as Ed mentioned, that it would be for a certain length of time, reassess it and see how it works out. So it's up to the merchants to really promote this and really capitalize on it and see and show a change due to the fact that these A-frames are out. So that's going to make a big difference on our end of it when we go to assess it, that it's a working in progress and is doing well. So that's a good thing as far as I'm concerned. Time of the day, I missed the timeline on a Saturday, from 1:00 to 1:00?
So I would say if you're thinking a shop is opening at 10:00 AM.
Okay. And you want it to how long?
If you want to extend it into the evening hours, into restaurant time, 10 to 10?
No. 10 to 8, 7.
I think you can... We have breakfast places. I'm... If we're going to do this, I think we just do it. And so, I mean, if a breakfast... Like if, say, Brothers wants to put... Or any business wants to put it out in the morning, I think, you know, from early in the morning until the evening, why is it going to matter?
Yeah, it's fine with me. I would prefer...
Do you want them to do a time then?
No, I think we should do a time.
8 to 8?
Or do sunrise to sunset? Can't see this from anywhere.
Well, no, that's true.
I'm curious what the owners of the bread shop have to say.
Yeah, I mean, I would like it to be open for the time that we're open, and we open from 8 to 6.
Right, but I don't want a conversation into the audience. So please stop that.
Could I maybe suggest that maybe Mr. Chairman, maybe like starting at 7:00 AM and going until like 8:00 PM? 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM? It's not like we have to capture early, late.
I like 7 to 8. That's fine. So at least we have a ballpark, 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. But that's fine. That's fine. So I mean, I'm in favor of the A-frames. I think it's a great work. I think that once the policies and procedures are set in place, I think that this will at least make some uniformity on the way that they appear on the streets. This is a win-win. So Mr. Mayo, you have a comment?
Ted, one comment. For years, and I want to thank you guys very much, and happy anniversary to you, sharing that with us tonight, Maureen. For years, we have struggled with this sign... A-Frame sign issue. And I think that previous boards, and my philosophy has been that times are tough on businesses. There are a lot of them that think... Believe that these signs really help their businesses, and I think that Main Streets Group does as well. So I always hated saying no to businesses without giving them something that can say yes, because we are about hopefully expanding the business base. What I'd like to suggest to the board is that, assuming that the board does approve this, that we will, as we have done in the past, the last time we did it was 2009, we will go to each sign in town that is not... That is illegally in use, and we will give them a warning through DBW that we will be scooping them. Does the board... Is that okay with the board? That will happen.
Absolutely.
I think we need to have enforcement. I don't want to wake up on Sunday and see, you know, a sign left out from the night before.
Perfect. Oh, yeah, that too, the old ones, but for the new ones, yes, but I'm talking about the ones that are existing.
The rogue ones that go...
So right now, there's say 80 of them in the town. Once we approve this, there will only be 50 in the town. There'll be 50.
And it'll be these.
And it'll be these.
Because at the same time, we'll be working on a signed bylaw to come back.
That's great. I think currently, it's in violation of the bylaw.
Currently in violation, I'm just going to go...
So you're asking, can we enforce?
I'm asking then, I'm going to, that that's what's going to happen if it's okay with the board, because in the past, we've been balancing.
And I think, Steve, what I would add to that is people are going to complain to us that the sign was scooped, and so we have to be strong. We have to say, yeah, it was scooped because of a reason. That's what's happened in the past, I think. So to stand for the process that we're allowing right now, to support the merchants that all seem to be on board.
Yeah, we will notify them.
We can't have a hodgepodge of lunch board signs.
That's correct. Absolutely. So it'll be... We will end up notifying the establishments that have them now and at least give them warning that once the lottery is complete, that's it.
Can we ask a question? A merchant question?
You can ask the merchant question.
If once we hold the lottery and the 50 businesses are chosen, if there's a business that wanted to participate and buy their own sign through this, would that be allowed?
How many more do you want to do?[1550.12]
It's not.
That's with the board.
How many, how, how, does the board want to cap what we start off on the pilot? Of how many we want to see? Uh, 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 out there, I mean, that, that would be us, I mean, we're doing a 50, 50 at first.
Do we think every business is going to want this?
No, I don't think every business will.
And so I, if someone wanted to purchase the same board, why not?
Just for Saturday, and they would still have to vote by the.
Program, right.
Tony, you have a comment?
I say we just stick with the 50, we're looking at a 13-week pilot program, we'll stick with the 50, and then we'll just get the information based on how the 50 went, and then if we want to add or increase that 50 to 75 or 100, or whatever number we come up with, but we just do a test, we do a trial.
Anybody else from the board have any comments on that?
I think that, yeah. So this is a very tricky situation we have here with the whole bylaw. If people have signs now that they shouldn't have out there, and they take them down, don't make the lottery, but want to buy one, I mean, I think that's a great point. I think that we should let them. The pilot program, I agree, Tony, that's, it's, uh, generally, it's, it's good to find out if it's gonna work, you know, with a smaller number, but at the same time, people that have signs that are gonna lose their signs, if, as long as they, you know, conform to the, the proper size and font and everything else, I think that the ones that have it, like you mentioned, there's a bunch that don't care about it. We give them the 50, and if someone wants to buy one that's had one in the past, I think we should allow that too. As long as they're playing by the rules.
Correct.
And I think you were thinking of that earlier too, the way you were motioning that some don't want it, but some are gonna lose it, so.
Any further comments from the board?
I just think too, again, with, so we set expectations, if someone buys one, this is a pilot program to get us through to holiday stroll. After that, who knows what will happen, so they may have a sign that they can't put out come next spring.
Totally.
Setting expectations on that.
Right.
Because we can't let this then dictate how our design looks downtown, because we have this, this pilot program. One other question on these, are, are these generally sold, are they marketed as, um, to be out on sidewalks, is that what, this particular design that you've selected?
So that, I'm gonna let Jenny answer this a little bit. Jenny did extensive research on a variety of different signs. This one came from an Etsy artist, correct?
Yeah, yeah. Um, I'm Jenny Terry from Wakefield Corporate Bank. Yeah, so, you know, we looked at kind of like the plastic one, and we found, we bought another one that was really lightweight, wasn't great quality, so this one is, um, on Etsy, and this is, the guy sells, you know, tons of them, so, um, I don't know if exactly for sidewalks, he's, he's not marketing them as like a sidewalk sign, but we found that this one is the most sturdy yet, you know, lightweight, it's not lightweight, but light enough to pick up.
I, I guess it's more just like the elements, if we get like snow or something, or rain or whatever the case is, obviously, the chalk is not an issue, but just the, just the appearance of them. Didn't have to be too big.
Oh, yes, they're covered, I asked about that, they're covered, he covers them in a weatherproof, um, you know, latex.
Ceiling.
Yeah, ceiling, yeah.
So, um, if we are in agreement at the current moment, then I will entertain a motion for the board to approve the request, um, by the Wakefield Main Streets program in conjunction with the Wakefield merchants, um, for the purpose of approving the sandwich board signs as defined during this, uh, presentation. So moved.
Second.
Seconded?
Second.
Oh, second, okay. All in favor?
Can we add an addendum to that? Is that something still we can do?
During discussion, we can add whatever you would like, my.
Okay. Just a, just a asterisk, I, I think that we should give folks that don't make the lottery the option to have a sign, as long as it conforms to everything else we've done for that time period. And then, like Ed said, going forward, who knows what's gonna happen, we may say, wow, people getting hurt out there, or whatever happens.
Right.
But I think we should give the folks, especially if they've had them already, a number won't want them, I think it's a great idea, I'm just trying to be fair about it through the whole town, to make sure, um, it's not hurting any business. At the same time, you're trying to enhance businesses, some might get hurt, and I, I'm just trying to keep that. So the addendum would be, uh, an asterisk for, uh, businesses that want to, um, continue to have their sign.
Must have that sign.
Yes, must have that sign, fine. They must have this sign and conform to the, the rules and regulations of your, um...
Of ours.
Peter, can I just ask you?
Sure.
You said, um, businesses who want to continue to have their sign, but it's, if a business owner doesn't make the lottery.
That's correct.
Is, is that what you're saying?
Yes, yes, so if they don't make the lottery, so it's not limited to 50, it might be.
If a business doesn't have a sign and they don't make the lottery, are we still letting them buy it if they want to?
There's still has to be a lottery. So, so, so can I make a?
No, do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so say it again.
You're saying, like, say Honeydew, let's, let's call, you know, Honeydew's sign has a sign, if Honeydew doesn't get a sign.
Right.
You're suggesting they could buy one.
Right.
But if a business doesn't get a sign because they weren't a part of the lottery, are they allowed to buy one if they want to? I don't know how we could split hairs like that.
Yeah, that's right.
It's gonna be tough.
Okay, it would be tough.
It's gonna be tough.
But you see what I'm trying to do, I'm not trying to, I'm trying to not have businesses that have signs out there now, but don't make the lottery, they lose their sign. And even though we, you know it's against the bylaws to begin with, so I'm just trying to make sure it's equal across the town.
I agree with you, I think you would have to open it up to those who don't.
Who don't have them now.
Make the lottery, could buy it, and you could do a max of like five extra signs or something, I don't know.
How did you guys get to 50? I had 300 originally.
I don't know numbers, yeah, so give me numbers.
It was more about the fund, the funding.
Okay, but how many, how many businesses are part of Wakefield Main Street?
I don't know.
100? I would say 100.
Yeah, probably at least.
So if you're looking at our whole town, maybe 200, right, if you look at some of those other areas? So, so really, 50 seems like a good number.
Right.
I don't want to put up barriers to stop anyone that wants one, I think that's what we're trying to do.
If they wanted to buy it.
Why? Yeah, why not?
I, I think if you, if you want to buy whether, regardless of whether you're in the lottery, if you want to buy it and, and conform with the same rules, then that.
I think that's right.
It's a pilot program, we're gonna see, and if we don't like it, we think that.
Exactly, without a cap?
I think, yeah, because I don't think, then who's, who's to regulate the cap, and then who's to say?
If it's too many during pilot, then we can bring it down.
Then we can revisit it, again, this is a pilot program, it sunsets, and so it's not something that's permanent, and we'll reassess.
Exactly.
But I do think we should distinguish this from, when you're talking about the, the businesses that are, currently have these sandwich boards out, they're violating the bylaws right now, so, so let's, let's be mindful of that, we've.
Sure.
The town has kind of turned a blind eye to it, but.
Right.
And also, I think, not to interrupt you, but on these Saturdays, when these signs are out, the signs that are not the signs that were approved, they have to be taken off the street. They don't belong, if, if a business had a plastic A-frame on that Saturday, then you're not allowed to play.
So, so, just to clarify from my perspective on this right now, I, if we are going to agree to go over the 50 limit, the sign has to be the approved sign of this board, no other sign.
Correct.
Once the policies and procedures are in place, it's up to this board whether or not they're going to allow how close one sign could be to the other sign. I don't, I personally don't want to see 10 in a row 15 feet apart from each other. I, I think that's gonna be overkill, and too much of overshot on a street, okay, which might, might not happen, but, um, but there's, if you're going to open it up to the entire town, I don't see that being an issue.
Right.
But, because how many people going to want to purchase the sign themselves? So you're opening up a lottery for the first 50, but if someone want, another business wants to open up, or wants to purchase a sign of their own, they can do so within these, right, and they have to follow.
This first year, and then for how?
And they'll have to follow the same procedures that we established. Is that okay?
And there may be none next year.
Right.
That's right. That's right. Are we all in agreement on that end of it?
Yes.
I think this much.
Okay, so, so what?
I, I like opening up them businesses, we have benches downtown, we have planners downtown, we have outdoor seating downtown, and now we're gonna have sidewalks lined with sandwich boards with no cap on it?
But it's not just for the downtown?
Conceivably.
It's not just for the downtown.
It's not just for downtown.
There's 1,200 businesses in the town, there's 500 that have brick and mortar.
You know, I'd like to keep those sidewalks open for, you know, shopability purposes.
I'm in full agreement with you, but I don't think that you're going to see them all in the downtown area. Alba Street would be tough to put a, a, a sandwich board on for the fact that they're not ADA compliant, so you have to, it's going to be on certain areas, because they need that 40 inches.
36.
Okay? If it's 36, yes, okay? But still, so it's going to be tough as where the A-frame is. So it has to meet the guidelines of the policies that we set up, so I think we have a protection that's going to get in place to make sure it doesn't become overcrowded, at least in my opinion. So, but that's okay, then, a, a vote, a, a motion was made, it was seconded, the addendum was to make it so that people who are over the 50, um, of the lottery can purchase them on their own if they want that type of a sign, and they have to follow the same policies and procedures. Does that sound like the motion that was?
I think we just clarified that, um, there are 50 available through lottery, anyone that does not have a sign through the lottery is able to purchase one on their own, whether they are participating in the lottery or not, it's their prerogative. Understanding this is only a pilot program, and if we don't like it, then we decide that it, we don't go forward with it beyond December, and that's that, and understanding if, if you have to absorb that cost, then you absorb that cost.
So, clarity's ours from 7:00 to 8:00 on Saturdays.
Yes.
And that everyone be forewarned, the illegal, the, the signs that violate zoning, you'll be getting a note to remove them all over town.
And then if these are not in compliance, who's going to be enforcing, who's gonna be, if these are out on Sunday afternoon, who's gonna pick them up? Is that a DPW decision?
The way that they determine that.
Yeah, we'll work it, we'll work that out, but we'll work that through the procedures that you guys are meeting on, probably our people.
Motion made, amended, seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? Congratulations, thank you guys. Both someone for your anniversary, have a, have a great evening.
Mar, can you send me those rules as soon as you can?
Yeah, yeah, it's by the end of the week.
Yes.
I'm just gonna step out, I'm dealing with a really tricky student crisis, and I'm trying a little tragic right now, so I'm just gonna watch from up there.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So, um, members of the board, um, let's try to move through the next two items on the presentations, um, quickly, then we can get right to the favorment, um, presentation, if you don't mind. Yes? Well, right now, we'd like to go to, uh, Business Enhancement Program. I, I'd like to jump into the one that I presented with the, uh, the Wingo, the Bingo. I showed this to Steve, I mean, I've been talking about this now for over two and a half years, uh, it's something that we should be doing to promote the businesses in the town, and I think this is a, a, a great opportunity for the selectmen to, um, show their support of the businesses by coming up with a program that actually, uh, drives people to go into all of the businesses within the towns. This isn't one area selective, it's for every, any establishment in the town that fits into one of the 24 items on the Wingo card. So if you look at it right now, you have takeout, you have, um, going to the gym, coffee shop, um, all of you have had this in your packet, it's a program that I believe was initiated by Boston after one of their large snowstorms, um, they felt it was a way of, um, supporting the merchants, uh, during their, um, hardest times by making people go out and purchase things at various stores, um, and to re-stimulate the economy, either after a bad summer or after a bad winter. Mr. Mayo, um, had, um, seen this, I showed it to him, uh, he thought it was a good idea, um, he had a couple of suggestions that we could possibly do in order to entice the person to go out to the various businesses, um, to, um, participate in this program. There's, there's 25 different ways of getting Wingo, all you need is one to enter, and you can enter as many times as possible. Steve, would you?
And I think what, um, we're talking to the chairman about is that at the end of a period, let's say we run it for the month of November, which is kind of a month where maybe, maybe people aren't going out a lot, or whatever, the board decides, um, maybe February's a better example, uh, then, every time you did, uh, five, five across, or four in the free square in the middle, you'd enter a lottery, and then we would pull the lottery at the end of that, and then give some Wakefield bucks that we get donated from one of the local banks, kind of a fun thing, I don't think this is gonna, um, you know, uh, make people rich, but I think it'll be fun and people get a, a chance to go out and say, where have you been? I went to, uh, Rotters, or I went to Sweet Bay, or I went wherever, and, you know, get people out and spending money in Wakefield.
Thank you, sir. And with this right now, you could, we can change up what the items are on here, if that is, if, needs to be, you know, altered or, you know, enhanced, but I think it's a great opportunity for us to, uh, uh, show, uh, some support to the businesses during their, um, hard months. I was thinking more July and August than, you know, say January and February, uh, running this, but, uh, whatever the board elects as far as the timeline with Mr. Mayo, I think that's good in my eyes as well, too. Comments from the board? Anybody have any comments on proceeding with this in any fashion? Any concerns?
I think it's a great idea, I think anything that's gonna promote businesses in our community is, is wonderful, especially during the off months, like summer and winter, so I, I think it's only got positive things.
Zero tax dollars will be expended?
Zero tax dollars.
Zero tax.
Other than my time.
But zero tax dollars.
I, I said this before, I think it's great, it'll help retailers, I think, I really like looking at Wakefield as not just our retail communities, but the great, um, nonprofit organizations we have, so, you know, put a square that if you rent a book at the library, or a square that if you take a class to the rec department, I think that would be amazing, and also helping our nonprofits drop off food at the food pantry, you get a square checked off, so, um, I'm gonna encourage you, chairman, to kind of think bigger and not just retail, get it's for retail, but also we can gear people towards businesses, uh, nonprofits in the town.
I think we can add a couple here to make this a little bit more diverse, how's that?
And, and not just about spending money, like experience Wakefield, if that's what we're going for, experience, I'll, you know, go, go check out our movie on the gazebo.
I think we can work out the details with Mr. Mayo and get this moving forward as the, the board so wishes. Any further comments on this? Then I will, uh, entertain a motion then to proceed with the, uh, Wakefield-Wingo business enhancement.
So moved.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Aye?
Aye, great idea.
Thank you very much. Uh, the last item on this before we move to Mr. Favorman would be the walkability, uh, move to, uh, trying to draw walkers from the downtown into the, um, from the lake into our downtown. This is, uh, something that was conceived back in December, I believe, when, uh, Mr. Longo, uh, asked that we should find a way to get more people into our downtown, um, after they walk to the lake, so once they walk around the lake, how do we draw them into the downtown? We came up with, um, a, a map that was part of the, um... Wakefield Emotion?
Mass Emotion.
Mass Emotion, so Mass Emotion did several walking routes for us, and I had the DPW add the two loops to the, um, to those maps in order to show what we would have for additional walking. So the lake is currently 3.2 miles, and one loop would add 1.1, the second loop would add 1.4 miles to that loop. One of them would actually, uh, bring more people past the current businesses in the loop than if they went down the, uh, the westerly side of the street where there's less businesses. Uh, so during, if this is approved, I would recommend that we look more to promoting loop number two than loop number one. The proposal, again, is to try to get as many people from Lake Quantapaw to come downtown, and how do we do that? So it's, for, for the lack of a better name, I, I chose Go the Extra Mile, and then the catchphrase could be Not Only For Your Heart, But For The Downtown. And how do we promote that? So, we can promote it by, um, creating T-shirts and have, um, a design of a heart in the wordage on the back, but again, we'd have to work with, um, the, uh, an organization to develop that promotional piece, as well as work with the merchants and get them on board before we initiate this. So there would have to be a discussion with most of the merchants, if not all the merchants, in that loop two, uh, radius. There was a suggestion from someone about potentially possibly putting, um, a line on the sidewalk like they do in Boston with the Freedom Trail. Not sure if that would fit our grant scheme of the downtown, when Mr. Favorman comes in, we'll ask him what his thoughts are, but it's something that we'd be open to discussion. There was an opportunity, um, initially for a discussion with the merchant, uh, Wakefield Main Streets, that they could possibly have a, a T-shirt sponsorship opportunity, um, they were seeking more detail to that before, uh, making, because they, we didn't have as much detail in regards to how many T-shirts, who would get a T-shirt, how would they get a T-shirt? I explained the roots of the routes to everyone, uh, promotion and reconditioning, this is a great way for us to promote the businesses and the activities in the town, it could be going to the library, it could be going to the farmer's market, it could be enhancing any component of our downtown, uh, uh, even the farmer's market because it's part of the initial loop. So, I, I think it's a great way for us as a community to say, listen, we support all of the activities, we support the community, and therefore, we asking you, go that extra mile for us, and the business could actually have a cling that they go, put on their window, they're saying that we are a, uh, extra mile business. There would be signage that for the lake that would be necessary, social media, sharing of the promotional packages, um, and then maybe an inaugural walk, um, get a couple of walking groups that could say, yes, we'll, we'll do that extra mile, and have the people watch them go through the, um, downtown as well, too. Mr. Mayo, um, you had, um, a suggestion of a possible way of promoting it?
I think if the board does want to go into this, um, uh, does want to support this, we could ask or require the smaller groups that use the lake, because certainly the buddy walk that is a thousands of people, we can't have them walking in the downtown, it just It just would be logistically a nightmare. But some of the smaller walks that have 100, 200 people through the permitting process of allowing them to use the lake, have them also come through the downtown to bring the people by our merchants and by our, you know, library and by some of the other items. So that would be another possibility here.
Comments from the board on this?
To Steve's point about some of the groups in 100, 200... We, you know, part of the contingency we should have with allowing those groups is that when they give away bags like this, we all, you know, all done, and we get the swag bag, is that we put something in there that promotes downtown Wakefield, and it should be a contingency that we'll look at down the road. But, you know, we want to bring those 100, 200 people downtown, and if we bring a fraction of them downtown, it's people that, it's incremental business that we didn't have before.
That's great. That's correct. I agree with you. Right? Any comments?
No, I think it's great. Yeah, let's think about long-term. I would also ask, Steve, did you guys talk to Mass and Motion about, I mean, they fund these things all the time, so I would encourage...
We have a Mass and Motion, kind of our person on, kind of like staff through our grant. She's the one who put the maps together with us, so, yeah, we will, and they may have some extra funding for this, too, so we'll ask them on that. Great point.
And then the other point is I love that it's Walk Wakefield. This is also a very nice biking route.
Yes.
And we should, we should think about, you know, closing these streets once a year and doing a bike ride to bring, again, people into the town.
And actually putting the bike racks in.
Yeah, that's my next comment, yes. Getting some more bike racks other than the one by the library.
Sorry to talk about bike racks.
With the red-colored bike racks.
Yeah. I'm not so concerned about that, but more bike racks.
Any other further comments on the proposal in front of you?
So what exactly are we voting on?
To implement the "Go the Extra Mile" program and to establish the guidelines that will encompass it, and then reach out to various organizations, and to change our approval process on the smaller walking groups to make it so that they have to do a fourth mile instead of just a 3.2 walk. Correct?
That's how I understand it, yes.
If I have no more comments, I'll entertain a motion then, please.
I just, one of the comments, just to get at macro level, is I think that this is a great idea, and I've often, you know, supported anything that brings people down, brings the wallets downtown. I think this is another example of that. I just hope that we're very mindful of the fact that driving traffic is very important, but equally important is having things to drive traffic to. And I know that we'll hear from Mr. Faverman and then, I believe, you know, VHB at the next meeting, but, you know, this idea of this vision, this master plan for the downtown, this is an important piece of it, but I want to make sure that we're really kind of accelerating all aspects of it, because we'll have plenty of people walking through, but if we're not showcasing a town that makes them want to, you know, shop or come back, then we're actually doing ourselves a disservice, you know?
Correct.
And so I think that this is a great step. I'm fully in support of anything and everything we can do, but I just want to make sure that, you know, we keep the broader focus on the comprehensive approach, the master plan.
It's the merchant piece.
Right.
It's the merchant piece as well.
Exactly, right.
So, and that's part of what we would have to discuss as we go forward in this.
Yeah.
How do we bring the merchants?
How to drive business, yeah.
And how do we bring the merchants into working with us to drive this?
Precisely, because, I mean, these are all the, these are all the pieces that we can get to fit together, but they need to fit together in a very cohesive way, but also in, I think, in a rather accelerated way.
Very good. Any further discussion on this? May I have a motion then to accept the proposal as presented?
So moved. Second.
Can I just clarify one more piece on this?
Yep.
I'm sorry, with the discussion of this. So are, is there gonna be, are we thinking of kind of temporary signage, or how is this? Because I think at this point, we're still working on the details of what the look of the downtown will be, so in the interim, how would we do this?
You run a lot, so when you go to, around the Charles, you ever see some of their events around the Charles? They have the signs like maybe every 500 feet, they're actually directing them or promoting what that walk is about. A certain stretch of the lake, say from Lawrence Street to Salem Street, on that grassy area before you make the turn, across over to the Upper Common, just have signs there, and that's the only spot for the signs that we would want to start off with. Just tell them, "Go the extra mile," then the next sign, "It's good for your heart, it's good for the community." Tell them how many more steps it would be, okay, if you did the extra mile. Okay, so if you did, it's 750, I mean, 7,500 for the 3.2, tell them that they'll get their full 10,000 if they want to fall. So, I mean, it's just giving them bits of information, because you know some, the walkers love that. If someone knows they can get their full 10,000 steps in, they'll go for it. I know they will. And I know runners will actually run it, because I see joggers now running our downtown. So it's not like they won't do it, they'll do it, too. And most of our walking groups right now are out between 4:00 AM and 8:00 AM. So at least the ones that I've contacted, there's a big group out at 4:00, there's another group out at 7:15. So it works where your traffic concern.
I just want to be sure that, again, we have a cohesive, you know, branding downtown and appeal.
Absolutely, I agree.
So the signage has to be incorporated into the broader plan and not a separate element.
And that will be part of Mr. Faverman's.
Right.
Right? Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Propose? Thank you very much. Appreciate your time. Can we please go on to our next proposal with Mr. Faverman, giving us the presentation for the branding of the downtown? Mr. Revis and Mr. Faverman, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Revis. We'll give a very brief introduction.
I like the way he said "brief." Mr. Revis, all yours.
I would like for you to meet Mr. Mark Faverman. I met him March of 2016 when I went to a seminar put on by the Massachusetts Replanting Council. They had a workshop in Winchester, and I saw a slideshow that's very much like what you're gonna see today. And after that, we received our grant from NA PC to do the Albion Arts Corridor, and I asked NA PC to add a segment of work in that report for Mr. Mark Faverman to do some branding ideas for Albion Street and just give us a taste of what, how we might make that a unique street. Mr. Faverman has a master's degree from Harvard, the Graduate School of Design. In 1980, he started his firm, and shortly thereafter, he began doing work for Disney World, Universal Studios. He has the Red Sox as a client and does the graphics and all the signage and branding for them. He's done that for several bowl games, the Ryder Cup. He's a consultant that the state has thought could really contribute to our area, and the Massachusetts Downtown Initiative regularly retains him every year. And this past year, they gave out four grants for four towns to receive his services on a small basis. What we're hoping to look for tonight is something a little bit beyond that. He's done work for a number of towns, and we'll see case studies of what he's done for different towns. And what he's accomplished is pretty extensive. Even the 1996 Olympics, he was, there were 481 firms that were shortlisted to do design and graphics and branding for the Olympics, and he was one of the five firms that were put on a team together to look at creating the look of the games. So we're hoping to have an opportunity to work with Mr. Faverman to do the look of Wakefield and bring that sort of insight to all aspects of the streetscape and the imaging of the town. Mr. Faverman?
Thank you. I have a bunch of slides to show you tonight. I'm gonna go through them rather quickly, but if you want to stop me at any point to say, raise your hand or speak out, and hopefully it'll give you a feeling of what we can accomplish and what we can think about doing here. I'm gonna start with what we did for the Albion Street study. Let's see, is that working? Here it is. Okay. Albion Street, as you know, is a corridor rather than a street, and it goes from Main Street to, across from where the T is. And when we do a project, we look at the history, and we look at the history of the community and see if we can draw anything from it. So of course, we looked at Wakefield's founder and antecedent, Mr. Wakefield, and what did he do to make all this money and so that he could donate a town hall? He worked with Ratan Furniture, one of the major furniture makers in North America, and you can see what this looks like. And contemporarily, it can look like this, and we started to translate it into maybe street furniture for Albion Street to give it a certain character. And we also had lanterns above as well as the street furniture. So we looked at it as a way to draw people down into the area and also to enliven it and to create a sense of place, a sense of destination, and this is what it would sort of look like on a busy day there. The other historical company that we looked at was Gillow, which every child from about five to eight, at some birthday party or before a birthday party gets a glider. And so we thought, well, maybe these can be gateway structures that would suggest a place, a sense of place when you arrived at Albion Street. And then we looked at maybe putting them on light poles. And we looked at the lake, and we thought, well, maybe we can light up the lake a little bit and connect downtown to the lake. And this sort of fits with what you've been talking about with signage and maybe what I call architectural cues, which we'll look at in a second. And this relates to community branding. And community branding, as I define it, is the application of large-scale branding to civic environments, corporate entities, sports events, and institutions. Now, if you go to Paris, you see these all over downtown Paris, which are the entrances to the subway, the metro. Other subway systems have very strong graphic components as well. The one on the right is the Tube in London, and the one on the bottom is the Much Maline T, but the T has a very strong image for Massachusetts. And what does this community branding do? It reinforces identity, it visually defines character, underscores uniqueness, links collective memory, connects communal familiarity, which then relates to a sense of arrival, a sense of place, a sense of shared memory, and community ethos. The three dimensions of branding, brand image or your reputation, brand identity, which is the core concept of the community, and third, brand behavior where is branding applied. Now, the pictures I'm showing you are other communities around Massachusetts. This, of course, is Lexington. And the power of a community brand celebrates attributes or assets, underscores positive perceptions, supports economic stimulation, strengthens pride of place. Rockport, motif number one. And then community branding includes the following: cultural narratives, urban engagement, small-scale interventions, communal experience, emotional connection, focus perception, place promotion, which you've been talking about all evening, stakeholder ownership, and strategic vision. This picture is of the Boston Marathon, about a mile and an eighth from the finish line, and above it is a project that I'm gonna talk about a little bit later. And then urban branding tools include symbols, monuments, icons, gateways, street furniture, wayfinding, element signage, pageantry, pageantry or temporary things like bunting and banners, public art, landscaping, visual theming, and social media. And there are all kinds of elements that we can do. I won't go through this hundred-element list. And how do we organize it? We organize it in something we call a kit of parts. Kit of parts is a visual menu, so anytime you take something, it can be done over a phased period, it all fits together, both in color, fonts, and whatever. The Olympics in 1984 started this off. This is a kit of parts from 1996 that I worked on. Even the Rio Games of 2016 had a kit of parts, and it looked pretty good, if you remember. And then we tried to do a kit of parts for Fenway Park's 100th Anniversary in 2012, and we got a few things done. Other things that lead to a sense of place are building icons. This is Brookline in 1933 when the College Corner Theater was first built, and in 1999, they asked me if I could come up with something, and this is what we came up with. And this is now the icon. This is in Trader Joe's and the shelf announcement, but they use it, you know, everywhere, and the Globe, when they talk about the town of Brookline, shows usually a picture of the College Corner Theater. Other building icons, this is Memorial Hall at Harvard, this is John Harvard. But I took a picture of this, and six tourists came up to me and asked me what it was. I think it's a water, it's a well of some kind, and the students would get water from it in the 18th century. In Southbridge, they had American optical, excuse me. And they no longer do, but they have the 25 high glasses there. Gardner has its furniture. Other places in Massachusetts such as Gloucester and Lowell on the left, and Plymouth, and the Shaker Village out near Pittsfield, all these things are symbolic. This relates to something else, which I call architectural cues, and architectural cues are not necessarily signs, but they're symbols, or they tell you you're arriving somewhere. So all these things are things we can think about and try to work with. If you remember the big to-do about the Sitco sign, and it's gonna remain even though change of ownership. Street furniture, you start off with crosswalks, you can do all kinds of interesting things with those. Street furniture benches, they come in all kinds of shapes and forms, as you know. You know, I have some new ones. I tried to sell this one to the Longwood Medical Area, but I thought my DNA bench was clever, but the doctors wanted it to come from Johnson &amp; Johnson, and it didn't. Other types of furniture, some good, some bad, some indifferent, that Anvil one at the top is in front of City Hall Plaza, the one on the right's in Greenfield, and it's actually a tree guard, and the one on the left is in North Hampton. A middle-aged campus planner decided that at Harvard Yard, there, people were not interacting. And so he got a whole bunch of chairs to put out in Harvard Yard so people could sit around and interact. When I walked there and looked at how they were interacting, I took this picture. So it shows you how this generation interacts. They don't necessarily talk to each other, but they're texting, or they're tweeting, or they're doing something else. But on the other side of interaction are another entity, and they need to also be taken care of, and they do talk when they're sitting on the bench, and they do interact. So generationally, we have to think about our designs and how they work across generations. Lighting, all kinds of interesting lighting. You can light buildings, you can light bridges, you can light lakes, you can do all kinds of interesting things. This is Providence Water Fire, which is a, has made a destination of Providence in the summer. We don't do a good job in the United States with kiosks, but that could be a wonderful thing, that it could be worked out. These are all European. These are some American ones, and you see the one in the middle is not being maintained. Maintenance is a major issue. Something that you just talked about a little bit, and it can add character if it's, if they're done well. Bus stops can come in all kinds of shapes and forms and can add a little design or cleverness. Gateways can be formal, or in this case, informal. This is one, we were approached by a bunch of developers who had donated $300,000 to a pitch in Brookline for a new park, and they wore their names on it. And I said, "How much do you have to spend?" And they told me, and I said, "Well, you know, for a little bit more, we can do a gateway rather than just a sign thanking you." So this is called Recognition Gateway. So underneath this, we thanked everyone, and this is well-received. It's the only piece I've ever done that I had my name on, by the way. This is something I said to you earlier, the birds of Audubon Circle, and there are about 20 of these birds in the light poles, and this is at the border of Brookline in Boston. Audubon Circle is a neighborhood of Boston. And you can see, they took the sculpture and they made a part of social media for the website. They made the design at the top. And this is something I want you to think about as we go through all this branding. It should be across channels, it should be 21st century and not just, so 20th century. We were honored to have this on Chronicle a couple times, and I think my last line is nobody knew that I had done it, and now they do. So. Other types of art wings is what were the birds, what I call art on a wing coming off of a light pole. And we looked at canopies. Canopies can be, you know, done in various, in various ways as well, and how light and color and illumination can help. Bents, um, excuse me, railings, let me go back. Railings and ironwork can be done in interesting ways. Transformer boxes, you see them everywhere. They can be done in a very elegant way. We happen to do them as part of a history exhibit, and we did them using historical images and working with the local museum for these in Brighton. Murals, this is, of course, on the Greenway. The one at the top is on Trader Joe's, the one on the bottom is on Whole Foods. So murals are being done in very different ways to reinforce a sense of community. Bicycle racks, which were brought up, we can do all kinds of things with bicycle racks, and they could add, and we can use the artists who are involved in the community to do some interesting things with them. Artistic planters can add to the streetscape as well. Signage and wayfinding. This is in Portsmouth, New Hampshire. This one is outside of Amsterdam. This one is in Hyannis, and almost unreadable, but colorful. These are from all over. Sometimes you can do a sign element that actually looks nice but is not functional, and these two... And these two are in Belgium, one's in Brussels and one's in Bruges. This is a nice area grouping of signage in Strawberry Bank and Portsmouth. Here's some that are not very well done. One's in Newbury Port on the right. We worked for the MBTA for a year, and we actually translated into ADA compliance all the signage for the MBTA. Virtual wayfinding, this is using the smartphone, and you can interpret things. So we may not need as many sign elements as you would think, but we could have QR codes, like the one on the top right, and that could give you information. This slide I always liked because this is a museum, the Museum of the City of London, and they give you a walking tour, and you hold up your smartphone, and it shows you what it looked like 100 years ago. And then Gloucester has a program that is connected to this, and you can go around Gloucester for about a mile around the riverfront, and you can get a history of Gloucester. Also, in Lawrence, there are a series of documentaries that were done by one of my staff members, and it's called "The Path," and it talks about the mills and the people working in the mills there. I'm on the board of something called "The Museum Without Walls," and it focuses on public art and architecture. And it's in about 80 cities. And they actually used my birds before I got on the board, so I was very pleased. So it shows you how that works with the smartphone. And augmented reality, you can see how things are going to look or how they used to look very clearly. And that leads us to the summary. Community branding allows for enhancing the urban fabric by adding visual quality and elegant function. It also fixes the holes and tears in the civic tapestry. The process of community branding emphasizes the distinctiveness, projecting a positive image, while providing a shared sense of arrival and a sense of place. Community branding underscores the unique character and personality of a particular place. Rather than just another location, the community then can become a destination, which I think is the goal for whatever we're going to be talking about with Wakefield. And here are a few case studies, and I'll go through those. I only have a few. Ipswich, everyone knows. But everybody sort of knows the fact that Cranes Beach has 750,000 visitors a summer or more, and people just get in their car and drive home. They don't go into downtown Ipswich. But Ipswich has the most first-period homes in the United States in any city or town. It has 59 of them, and people actually still live there. And so these sort of ancient houses from 1630, 1725 are really something in the town. Additionally, they have the Chote Bridge. And the Chote Bridge was built around 1760, and it was the first double-arched bridge in North America engineered. And we came up with a kit of parts based on that design and with... working with the community. And there, the tagline was "Bridging History," because they have a contemporary economic base along with the history that they wanted to connect it to. So this is what we do, is we look at fonts, we look at colors, we look at materials. And then we gave them a family of elements. And here's a gateway idea for the Riverwalk, which goes parallel to it. And then they started to implement these last fall. And as you can see, parking is a strong element, and it's usually one of the first elements that is implemented. And there, we're now in the process of having this kiosk, and the second kiosk will be a digital screen. Situate, which is referred to by many as the Irish Riviera, with lovely homes, beautiful vistas, wonderful harbor, great golf courses. But the national news knows Situate for this, which is the huge waves hitting in on New Easter. So the committee worked together, and they came up with this as their tagline, "See Situate." Again, kiosks. Here's a picture I took. They were talking about a mural. I took this picture, and then we applied it to what a hall, where the mural is, in the harbor area. We applied it to the website. We applied it to Facebook page, and even to the stationery that went out about committee meetings. My daughter said, because I had a cartoon done of me, I must be doing something important. As you may or may not remember, Building 19 and 1/2 had these wonderful cartoons. This is the cartoonist. He lives in Situate. His name is Matt Brown. He's in his 80s. And he comes to meetings, and he was very angry about something. And he did this, and I thought it was great. And he was shocked that I asked for it. But I thought it was kind of cool. We initially did a project there along the harbor for a parking lot. And then we did banners that related to it as well. Brookline, very different type of feeling in the area. Frederick Longstead's shadow was cast over it. His firm was there for 80 years. His... of course, the ammo necklace. He loved American elm trees. He loved English elm. Of course, what, 30 years ago, we had light elm disease. Brookline has six commercial districts. How do you connect them all? So what we did is we used the elm leaf as the image. Peabody, George Peabody, The Philanthropist. He is considered probably the model for Ebenezer Scrooge, believe it or not. And I'll tell you more about that some other time, but he was. It had a tanning industry, which doesn't mean that you could get a tan. It meant that it was leather processing. It also has agricultural tradition. And we looked at the elegant historical details of buildings there, and we tried them in different ways, in drawings and things. And then we also saw they had a rosette motif. So this is what we came up with for them. And here are the elements. We even did a bollard with George Peabody sitting on it. And they started to implement this program as well. Winchester was the first project that we did, and some serious Victorian buildings there, beautiful homes. But Victorian fonts are unreadable. But we found this on the 1880 Town Hall on the railing, so we applied that to the bottom of these. And that's... I think I did it fairly quickly. I hope I didn't do it too quickly. Any questions or anything I can help discuss?
... Any questions that you would like to ask of the young man who's doing such an in-depth presentation?
What would our biggest icon be in Wakefield?
We're going to have to study that. Nothing comes to mind except the lake. I mean, that's pretty strong. But how do we make that a visual? How do we look at that in different ways? But we work with the community, various representatives representing various aspects of the community. And the community comes up with these. Like the bridge in Ipswich was something they came up with. The See Situate was something the community came up with. The 10 people on the Brookline Review Committee came up with the idea of something to do with elm leaves. And Winchester, they basically wanted site-specific images. So the library had a library image, and the town hall had a town hall image. So everybody has their own character and personality.
So it could be hodgepodge, though. At the beginning, it's going to be a collective of different ideas until you put something that could actually be presented on tour a detail. Yes, Ed?
Mr. Piverman, you were actually, I think, one of the first calls that I had when I was elected to the Board of Selectmen, and we spoke for a long while because I had heard of your resume, and I know you've done work all over the world, basically, or drawn inspiration from all over the world. I'm hoping you could explain to the residents that might be watching just how this... how what you do fits into kind of a broader vision or a broader master plan for the downtown. You're obviously not doing cutouts and determining certain elements in terms of design, the hardscapes necessarily, but you're doing a lot of the look, the feel, the image, the continuity. Could you just help people understand?
Keep going. I think that the strength of our firm is that we look at the large, big image, and then we narrow it down to the small. And oftentimes, design firms will look at small to the big. Now, trained as a planner and urban designer, I look at the urban design aspects of this and how this reinforces the concept of sense of place, sense of arrival, sense of shared experience, all those things that I find important. Precedents over the last 100 years have been done. And so we try to take that and then interpolate or interpret that for a particular community. The sense of pride of place is also very important. But coming into Wakefield, you're not sure that you've arrived. You're not sure where the downtown starts or where it ends. So there are a lot of things that we could start doing, and they could be either sign elements, or they could be architectural cues. They could be public art. We could get the artist community involved if they're so inclined. We can also look at how the streetscape is done and what would enhance that, or what would light that up better or illuminate it. Is that...
Yeah, so I guess with that, I mean, you have your kit of parts that you bring to the table. Then, as I envision things, and I want to make sure that it's consistent with the kind of work that you do, as I envision things, then you'll work with other experts who may have different areas of focus, who work on, say, bumpouts, for example, or the way that the cars are parked in a particular area of the case. You work in a sense, in tandem with them, right? In terms of... It's a collaborative effort, I guess is what I'm saying. Your kit of parts is an important element, but it's part of the broader strategic plan, master planning that would go in, that would be needed. Correct?
It is... The look of a place incorporates a lot of different things, as you're saying, and it may incorporate some traffic calming or some landscaping, and all these different elements that need to come together and be coordinated.
And that would also be something, I know one of the big issues we often hear is downtown versus the Greenwood area, which is about a mile or so out, or four corners for that matter. There's a lot of different pockets within the town. Do you have a confidence that you could bring together, have consistent elements that would make us feel like one community and make visitors and consumers, I guess specifically, feel as if, okay, this is Wakefield. I'm in Wakefield now, and then you know, oh, I'm in Melrose, or I'm in Linfield. I want to turn around and come back to Wakefield. You can do that?
Right. Less is more, but sometimes you have to have enough to make that work. Directional things and gateway elements are all very important to have that conversation, a visual conversation, take place with first-time visitors and maybe even second-time visitors who don't know the way around.
I guess just one final point, I'm sorry. I know you had given a lot of examples of all different types of design, but I know that in my speaking with folks in town, they like that there's a certain charm and character to Wakefield. It's a quaint community. It's not as cutting-edge as a lot of more urban areas, potentially, that have more ambitious art and the like. It sounds like you have the ability to draw from what we have here, some of the architectural elements and the like, to create something that feels fresh and new and current without sacrificing the charm and character that we have here.
I need to take you with me to other presentations. Because you're phrasing it very well. Yes, my answer is yes. We pride ourselves in thinking about it. I was talking to Paul, and I think as an urban designer, you sort of have to be a historian. And you have to use the context of society and the cultural aspects of society in order to be successful. And I think that that's part of what we, I think, can bring to the table and did for Wakefield.
Thank you.
Peter?
No, I think Ed said it all on that one.
Sorry.
No, I don't know. I think it was good questions. No, I wasn't making fun of you. Bill Paul's not... No, I think it's great. I think we do need the gateway concept to know you're in Wakefield. You're right, I never know when I'm in Wakefield, per se. You know, there's... You have the gazebo, the Lower Commons, Upper Commons, but you don't have that grab, drag-you-in feeling like I'm in Wakefield, not in Linfield or Melrose. So I think this is a great way to go for us. This is really good. And I'm looking forward to doing some more on this. This is good.
Yeah, I'm going to echo what everyone says. I think as an urban planner, it's really important to look at history and the charm and elegance of our town. And then I'm going to encourage you to look... Or for us to look a little forward, I think, too. I was just in Chicago a couple weeks ago. They have this really cool art program in Rogers Park where they have a seawall, and community members all get blocks of it and paint it in a theme. And it was beautiful, and people go and take pictures. They've got colorful benches and great murals. You know, there's a way to hold on to tradition, but also look forward and get community involved in some of this. And so I'm really excited about that because I think, yes, our tradition and our values. And let's look a little forward of what we want our town to look like.
Just one quick thing to add, Mr. Chairman. I need you, going forward, to just take off your urban planner hat and put your suburban planner hat on because we do want to maintain that small-town, to Ed's point, that small-town community that we have in Wakefield. Thank you, great presentation.
Thank you.
And I will go along those lines as well, too. Mr. Rivas knows that I like to maintain as much of the historic components of our building as possible moving forward. It's always nice to put in new, but it can't be all new. We have three, four major projects going on in the town right now. No historic capabilities, in my eyes, in my opinion, to those buildings. Okay? If we do things in certain locations, I wouldn't approve anything that didn't have an historic quality to it because I don't want to see Wakefield lose that charm. Okay? You can do it on the outskirts. You can put 20 units here, 60 units there, but still shiny. Keep those on the outskirts. If it's in our main area, our focus points, if it doesn't have an historic quality on it, urban, suburban, whatever you call it, it's not going to be an appeal to the character that we want to keep. Because we've been striving to keep that character, but only making things be that gateway, make people want to come here. They didn't change Lexington. They didn't change Concord. Okay? A lot of people still go there. Okay? Let's not change Wakefield too much, especially in its downtown proper and Greenwood. Okay? You want to make your gateway? Show them our historic past. Tell them this is what's great about Wakefield. Come see what we have to offer. Okay? That's something that I would like to see happen. So that's how this works with you. I think Ed's in agreement, too. We have to focus on what we have for an overall package, a plan to bring us into that next step, get the component that you're trying to do for us right now, and then add that to other streetscapes as well, too. Okay? The bumpouts. Portable or mobile bumpouts. Put them in for two weeks, take them out. Okay? So you extend the area. I've seen those in communities, too. We have a couple of prime locations where we could put beautiful murals on. How do we entice them to do it? How do we get them to do it? What kind of design do we want on there? Give us some ideas to present to a person and say, "Listen, if you do your building over, this is what it could look like." Okay, that's... We have some prime property to that. We could put some murals on it and bring out the art and culture component of what, especially like Albion Street or various areas in the town. So I like what's being presented. I'd like to see what the next level is. So, Mr. Mayo, any comments?
I've met with Mark a number of times. I am very impressed with his presentation. As you guys all know, I've shared that with you. He is very well-respected, and he's very humble, particularly with the MAPC. I think that they almost looked... I think that they almost looked to him for advice, or they looked to him for advice on a lot of issues, and that'll be very helpful on us going forward. I've seen this presentation a number of times, and one thing I've missed up till today was that the way that some of the commercial businesses, and I think it was in Brookline Village, or maybe, that actually took the town's icon, a town's image, and used it in their own advertiser. I thought that was great. I think it was the Trader Joe's was using it or what have you. And these are big national change. They're not, you know, a mom-and-pop place. So I thought that was really cool, bringing that whole thing together, so. What I'd like to get is the blessing of the board to move forward and actually, got a lot of, out of him for nothing, a lot of ideas for nothing, that's what I try to do here, and actually go proceed to hire Faverman, to, Mr. Faverman, to handle this project for us. We do have community block grant money, Mr. Darko, so there won't be any taxpayer money used. I can't think of another, of a better use for that money than this, and to proceed forward with a committee made up of stakeholders, including members of this board, to get this project, pull all of these passionate groups together and move forward for the town. So that's what I'd like to do, if that's okay with you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayo. So one point on this, officer, I read the draft proposal that you had. I'm going to add, please, that part of this is that this board be made aware of progress, not through Mr. Revus or Mr. Mayo, but through you, okay? So you can present us various bits of information that will get us to the point of saying, yes, a step of completion of where we are at this point. Because a lot of us would be, want to ask here firsthand how we're moving forward. So I'm on board with what Mr. Mayo is asking for right now as the next step. What is the opinion of the board? Do we authorize the town to go into agreement with Mr. Faverman in order to do the branding and wayfinding design services?
I think just another question I have is, in terms of timeline.
I like to see this done yesterday, basically, so. How, I think everyone knows that, too. How quickly can you competently do this, do this work in a way that is?
To do it with any kind of seriousness, generally would take six to nine months or two years. But we could start having some things to show you within three months, and we could start testing some things. If you wanted to do temporary signs for your walk system, that could be part of this as well, which I thought was a great idea, by the way. I thought it was a very clever idea. And the idea, the major idea of all of this is how do we make downtown Wakefield a destination? And how do we make Wakefield have its own brand and its own sense of place? So all this is connected, but we certainly can do this in a phased way, and we can also do it so that we present to the Board of Selectmen at various phases and get your blessing for it.
Any further comments?
So I'm hearing within two months we'll be halfway there.
We're sure, thank you. We're gonna get to where you'd like to be, but not as fast.
In 2017, we, a lot of people interpret things.
Right. Any further discussion? Can we have a motion then?
So moved.
So moved. Second? Any discussion further? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Faver.
Thank you very much.
Great joke. Great joke. Let's move on with the agenda, please, and try to wrap the rest of this up and go on to the next level, and that would be to, we have a request from WCAT to donate a bench to be installed at the dog park. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Do we have a picture of the bench?
It's the standard bench from the, from around the lake and the common, the same wooden benches.
And if I could give you, did you have a vote? Oh, we did.
You did.
No, we just finished the vote. We just took, because Ed asked a question about the bench. Is it the standard bench?
Yes.
So it's the standard bench that you see up at the common and around the lake now? All in favor? Aye. Posed? Okay.
If I could add just one thing on this, because I know that Selectman May has been questioning, or has asked questions on this. The park has been dig-safed, and there was one area that there was a line through that looks like it's going to be fine, so they can remove the earth and put down the chips and what have you, so. That's proceeding along.
So timeframe-wise, do you?
Timeframe could be quicker than Ed gets his.
Four months.
Four months.
I think, I'm still holding to August.
Two weeks.
Okay, so.
Yeah. I didn't say the year.
The Florida eight, I think it's yesterday, too. The next item on the agenda, please. Thank you, Mr. Mayo, thank you, Mr. Mayo.
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
For a banner?
I think you should.
I have to recuse myself.
Don't have to leave.
Voting on the Hallmark Health banner.
Right, but I don't think you have to leave, do you?
No.
No, you can remain, you're just recusing yourself from the vote, correct?
Yes.
You just stay.
You're short.
Okay. So there's a request from Hallmark Health to hang a banner over Main Street from August 21st, 2017 to August 28th, 2017, to promote Hallmark's stride for healthy communities and for the town to accept the banner as a gift. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a motion? Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you very much, one attention.
Yes.
Okay, so let's move on to the next item on the agenda, please. Item E, request from the Lucy B. B. Memorial Library to accept and expend a gift to the town of Wakefield in the amount of $35,493.78 with banks. Do we have a motion? So moved, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, end of discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. A request from the town treasurer to transfer $1,050,162.50 from the town's capital projects account to the town's general fund so that the following bonds can be paid. Galvin feasibility, principal $25,000, interest $4,443.75. Athletic fields, principal $300,000, interest $68,543.75. Public safety, principal $525,000, interest $60,275. Land acquisition, principal $60,000, interest $6,900. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion made, second?
Can I just understand?
Discussion?
I just want to just tell what this is.
These are past bonds that have already been approved by town meeting, and what happens is the money goes into the debt service account, so to speak, and then it gets moved over to the general fund so we can pay them. This is a housekeeping article, it's gonna happen all the time.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. We have, our next item is Terrant Lane, Mr. Mayo.
Yes, very quickly, Mr. Chairman, I want to thank the board. A lot of questions have come in on Terrant Lane, which is the old Coast Guard housing up on, off of Hopkins Street. As we know, as the board may be aware, that's about four acres of land that was taken by the U.S. government in 1954 as part of a 57-acre judgment of land located in Wakefield and Reading. And believe it or not, at that time, the U.S. government paid a little less than $16,000 for the entire 57 acres. And it appears from the records that I have come up with that the land question was owned by the Wakefield Hospital Corporation. So the board asked me at our last meeting what I think I would recommend on it, where there is a bidding process out and that the land is up a bid by the government. I have met with the Government Services Agency. Selectman May and I have been up on the site. I want to thank selectwoman Marine Butt for helping me actually set up some time with Representative Moulton's office. They actually were kind enough to set up a conference call, and we were able to talk to the GSA there. The GSA of the U.S. government's thought process on this is to maximize their money out of this property and to reuse the money that they get from it, this is what they've told me, to build military housing where needed. They don't need it so much in Wakefield, Mass. anymore. So that's hard to argue with that, sort of their overall philosophy on this. But in any event, I've gone up there and looked at and actually was able to receive a bid package. And the way the bid package works with the federal government is it's kind of a rolling bid, so it isn't one day of auctions, you know, we're all gonna raise our hands, but there's a time period where you can make bids. In order to even be allowed to make a bid, you have to deposit $75,000 cash with them. Of course, you'd get that back if your bid weren't successful. So query, where would we come from with that money without going to town meeting? We don't really have that anywhere else, that amount. The starting bid is $750,000, and I will tell you that as of late, the latest bids I'm hearing are up around $2 million. So this is a hot piece of property. In order for the town to even make a bid, our bid would be made with contingencies. Of course, we'd have contingent on town meeting and any vote that may happen afterwards, and I believe we'd need a two-thirds vote at town meeting. So that would be, that would be very problematic. I looked at this in a number of ways, and if the government were to give the land to the town of Wakefield for a dollar, I would maybe certainly have another opinion on this. But that's not gonna happen. I've been trying since 2014 to get something like that to happen, it's not gonna happen. And I've met with a number of the people that probably have questioned the board and asked questions of the board on this. So because of that, because it's gonna, it's already up to $2 million or so, we need to put $75,000 down, and we have to really think about what we're doing, what are our priorities? We talked a lot at our planning session, you know, adequate public safety, better roads. We talked a lot about investing in our downtown. Part of that is creating taxable income elsewhere. If we were to keep this property in-house, we would not, it would not be taxable, as it is right now. So putting this back on the tax rolls with a smaller development or development, as is $60,000, if there is a larger development, which from a planning perspective is probably the better route, that could be $200,000, $250,000 a year in taxes, tax revenue to the town. So that being said, and the fact that I don't think any of the other options that would have been thrown out there are really worth it, are really feasible. Somebody said a hockey rink, the land is too small for a hockey rink. Someone else said a community pool, that would be great, but that's kind of in and out-of-the-way spot. Community garden, again, out-of-the-way spot. Not on public transportation at all. I just, and the topography is very slanted, so for fields it wouldn't work. I don't even think we need the fields now at this point, anyway. I really think that it is best for the town to say, hey, this is great, hope someone buys it and puts a really good project there. They've gotta come through us, because water comes through Reading anyway, so there will be an intermunicipal agreement with Reading for that site. And any approvals that they get, they'd have to go through our board, so it will be, it is my, in the final analysis, in the fact that I think this land should go on back in the tax rolls so we can fund all the priorities that we've talked about, that the town pass.
Thank you, Mr. Mayo.
I'm ready for any questions.
Comments from the board? So there would be a vote, there would just be non-action by this board, correct?
Correct.
I could just say, I know that, Steve, I've had several conversations with you about this, and I know that we've explored a number of options, and I think if the town had a pressing need for something that was viable, I think it'd be a different discussion.
Right.
But that would be at the sacrifice of potentially a quarter million dollars in tax revenue at a time when people feel like they're being squeezed in town with taxes. And so I think the idea of foregoing that opportunity for land that we don't really have a priority need for is a great, is a great sacrifice for the town and one we need not make for the taxpayers. So I think for that reason, I feel comfortable with where we're at. And I've looked at all you've provided, I've looked into it, we've explored it, I've had many discussions with folks, and I understand if this, as you say, if it were a dollar, maybe we think a little bit differently, but even then, if we're losing.
It would be on the tax rolls.
If it was off the tax rolls, that's significant, especially to our elderly folks who are on fixed incomes, it matters.
Very good. Any other comments? Yes?
This is something we've dealt with prior to folks sitting on this board for the past few years as well, and I think people have always thought, if there was a way we can grab it, we should try to do that. However, we've looked at all the options. The bids are over $2 million. It just, I don't think it's financially viable right now, and as you said, Ed, if we had a great plan, but I think it comes at the expense of what we just listened to, what we're trying to do in the downtown area. So I think because, Steve, you've talked to people in the federal government, you've talked to our federal elected officials, we've looked at every avenue. I feel comfortable saying I don't think we should pursue it as well.
Any further comments? So this time we're just going to let it lie?
Yeah.
Okay. Very good. That the agreement of the board?
Good. Job to do nothing. I get to do nothing?
But you'll get to update us.
Yes, I'll update you as the bids come in.
And if there's opportunities to talk to the developers.
Absolutely.
Yes, we get to approve their votes, but it would be great if there, again, some creative strategic partnerships going forward, whoever wins the winning bid.
Often the all bridge.
Yeah, no. Let's partner together, make some affordable units, or, yeah, let's work together.
Very good. Thank you. Let's move on to item number six, license and permits. There's a request for a new application for a common victory license for Laurie's 90993 New Salem Street. It was part of your package. Do we have any comments? If not, then we need to have a vote on the issuance of the license.
Motion?
Motion? Do we have a motion from the floor?
So moved.
Second?
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Item B is renewal application for a secondhand dealer license from Wakefield Antiques, 306 Main Street. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved, do I have a second? Motion and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Renewal application for Bowling Alley license, Wakefield Bowledrome, 92 Water Street. So moved?
So.
Seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Warrant review and signing, just want to, just make a general statement that everyone can just see which warrants Mr. Wongo signed, and thank you very much for doing an outstanding job. Enjoy it. Enjoying it, thank you. Matters not anticipated by the chairman within 48 hours of the meeting. Let's move on to the final run. Let's start with my left Marine. Any comments?
Just any comments. So two comments. We gave out two great community service awards today. If people in town have any other recommendations, let any of us know. We would love to continue the tradition of giving out great community service awards to people in town. And then the second thing for Mr. Mayo, if you could give an update about the Wi-Fi poles and the MBTA situation that happened, I think that would be a great issue.
They were actually pulled.
Yes. That's the update. I'm giving you a moment, too.
Give me a moment, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, there was a community outcry about a number of Wi-Fi poles along the MBTA corridor. And although a couple of them in Wakefield actually weren't gonna be too bad, at least in my opinion, they were kind of in areas that weren't gonna affect homes and what have you. There were a lot of communities that were very upset. Our state delegation really put a lot of pressure on the T, and they pulled the whole thing, so we live to fight another day.
Excellent. Thank you very much. End it?
That's it.
Yeah.
So, you know, I had a conversation with Steve this morning, just very briefly, that in light of what happened in Virginia, I don't think everyone knows that we had the same incident in 2002, when the Church of Blah-Blah, I'm not even giving them credit because they're not a real church, neo-Nazis came and spoke at the Wakefield Library, and it was quite an event. We had outsiders come and protest, and we had Wakefield residents decide very thoughtfully to hold a peace vigil elsewhere, and Wakefield residents protested as well. Why I brought it up to Steve is, I think in these times, you know, we can't put our head in the sand thinking it might not happen again in our town. And so I know Steve, they did such a great job back then of working with the police, with NAMLEC, with clergy, with community groups, to really come out strong against something like that. And we have that same plan in existence today, in existence today, to combat if something like that happens again. So I was, I was happy to hear that Steve was also thinking about it as well. And secondly, just that the, there were a lot of complaints about the light poles on Albion Street, Mr. D'Naco was reminding me, complaints from residents, rightfully so, that some of the poles were exposed down below, and those were immediately tended by Gas and Light Department.
Yes.
To cover up any issues and to fix those. So, people got their legitimate complaints to the right places, and they were dealt with right away. So, thank you to the Gas and Light Department.
Thank you very much. Ed?
I have two things. One, this weekend is Festival Italia, and I encourage everyone to come out. I know Selectman Longo and I are both going to be in a dunk tank, so that should be interesting. And it's for a great cause, the Wakefield Educational Foundation. And the second piece is more of an observation of tonight's meeting. I think you're seeing that we really have some momentum now in the downtown. A lot of our focus has been downtown-related and Main Street-related, and I think that's great. At this point, I think we're really, you know, at a point where those who have expressed interest in being involved and wanting to have, you know, some volunteering opportunities or have some ideas come to light, this is the time to do it. So, please reach out to any of us on the board or Mr. Mayo, and let us know if you want to be involved, because we're going to need a lot of folks and a lot of input, and this is, this is your opportunity. So, I invite you to join us in this, because I think it's a great project. I think we finally have a master plan that is beginning to take shape, and that's going to be an amazing opportunity for our town and for our people. Thanks.
Thank you. So, Longo?
Still part of my thunder, but we are a downtown-centric board or business-centric board. We talked about, you know, new benches downtown, we talked about the sandwich board, we have outdoor seating for the bread shop, as well as a couple of other establishments down there, we talked about the Walk Wakefield, and we talked about Mark Fawerman tonight. So, I think within, you know, probably by springtime, early summer of next year, you're going to see a very different, vibrant downtown.
Ed, sir?
That's it?
Thank you, Ms. Longo. Mr. May?
Okay, so we do have the Event Planning Committee doing the Festival Italia from 2:00 to 8:00 this Saturday. Still need volunteers, if people want to come and participate as well as help, that would be great. Street closings at 11:00, and events 2:00 to 8:00. There'll be six bands on two different ends of the street, one near Lincoln and Main and the other near the Universal Unitarian Church. Also, on Thursday, August 17th, this Thursday, we have the Samplings and Satire, which is a fundraiser for events like the Event Planning Committee Festival Italia. So, it's not too late to buy tickets. They look like this. Let me zoom in. It's going to be at the Four Points Sheridan, 6:00 to 11:00. Fun-filled evening featuring local comedian Paul Vangelo, who's fabulous, he's always going to be great. Food samplings, they have tequila tasting, too, for people over 21. And music and dancing with a good DJ, and $35 per person, but must be 21 to attend. That was the EPC plug, was that all right? So, one last thing, the dog park is definitely near and dear to our hearts, and the board did a great job last October, October 12th, we agreed to do it, and 12:10 it opened quickly, kind of a bare, naked park. The grand opening, I hope, to be in maybe August or September, with eight inches of mulch, less any other ground wires or anything else we have to dig up in between, as Mr. Mayo pointed out. So, hopefully, we'll get some notice ahead of time, and people can attend.
Thank you, Mr. Mayo.
See to follow.
Thank you. As far as myself is concerned, I'm just going to jump in before I go to my left. We have a couple of open items that we need to follow up on. We have the group home issue. We're supposed to be working with representatives, seeking information. I believe you're going to talk to town council about...
Yep, we're all set with that.
Certain matters, okay. Market Street issue?
I can give you an update on that.
Okay, at that time, okay, that's fine. Pause proclamation that was presented, there's a, I would like to have that on the agenda, possibly for the September meeting. Plastic bag committee has been formed and has already met?
Meeting this week.
Okay.
Wednesday.
Very good. Sign bylaw committee?
That one, we still have to set up a meeting for.
Okay, could we arrange to set up a meeting for that, please, and get that moving forward? Parking committee, any reports on that that you can give us when you go around the table? Very good. I think that in general, we had a great meeting tonight, as far as bringing up some great issues. We had a great presentation. I think we have a direction that we can move forward in the near future, maybe not in two months, but, you know, several months, we'll get to that point and be happy about it. I'm going to move it to my, Tom, what's that, what you?
Just one thing, in connection with Charlottesville, it's worth noting, we do not have a parade permit bylaw, as a number of communities do. So, I'm going to be polling some neighboring communities and seeing what they've got, and I hope to get you a draft bylaw that we can present to the fall town meeting.
Excellent. Good idea. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you. Mr. Mayo?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, you asked for a couple of updates. On the group homes forum that we had, we did ask our reps to join us. Unfortunately, they were in session and weren't here, because there are some state and federal issues, but state issues that we need, some issues with. They asked for some information that we are compiling for them. We almost have that all done. There's some ownership issues that we need to work on, but they will get that after I talked to Mr. Mullin, that was no problem. So, I anticipate inviting them in, and maybe if the chairman would like to have another forum with them present, that might be good, but that'd be up to you, what you want to do there. Regarding parking, the board kindly acquiesced to my setting up a parking committee with a very short timeframe, coming back to the board in September to give with their findings. The parking committee has met. It has a couple of initiatives that we will like to discuss with the Traffic Advisory Committee next week or the week after when we meet, that we're bringing them back to the, to the board, to see what the board wants to do some actions. This is parking along the edges. This is not a full-blown new garage, as much as we would like it to be, but there may be some issues that we can do some work and take some of the pressure off the downtown. We've had some really good discussions with some great merchants and business owners downtown. One thing you didn't ask about was the rail to trail. You may have seen some of the MassDOT people out there actually looking at the Water Street crossing, where the rail to trail will cross Water Street. One thing that MassDOT will, they will look at crossings that are, in their mind, a little bit more dangerous than some others, and that's a pretty busy thoroughfare, actually has a fairly high crash history, believe it or not. So, that's something that they're looking at there. So, they are working out some of the logistics there, and that project is going forward. And I think that we should be actually in front of MassDOT with some sort of a finalized version of that, probably September or October of this year. So, that's a, that's a big issue that we're looking at. We're also meeting with, I don't know if they're called North Star or National Grid and Star, whoever ever source, there's all these different companies that are involved in that as part of that underground line that will go down the rail trail, or what will be the rail trail, and we'll get a lot of that work done in conjunction with MassDOT. So, I'm very happy about that, too, and that's evolving as we go over the summer, too. Finally, I did want to say that I have been, the Market Street Group has reached out to me. I think that, from what I'm hearing, is I think that they feel that perhaps the offer that Wakefield made and signed was a pretty good one, and I would anticipate Linfield coming back with an acceptance of that, probably by our, I'll let you know, the board already voted, we can run around and get that signed. We don't need to have another meeting on it, but that seems to be moving in that direction. But I did very candidly tell the Market Street Group that under no circumstances will Wakefield, under my recommendation, sign anything first, again. So, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. I appreciate it. A lot of good information. Without any further comments from the board, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Thank you, WCAT.